I have one more minute.
That works because I still, the livestream timed out, so I have to start it again.
Where is this being livestreamed to?
It's going to be livestreamed on our Facebook page.
Okay.
And Karina showed me how to do it, so I actually livestreamed it to the Facebook page and not like the pretend Facebook page.
What about TikTok?
Apparently there's a pretend Facebook page. I had no idea.
We gotta get on TikTok. The kids are on TikTok.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll TikTok this right now, Dinesh. Absolutely.
So.
Back to your buddy Bill Gates on that one.
I think we should make money off of that and give it to the taxpayers.
According to my clock, it says it's 6:30, so maybe we can get started. So I'd like to call the school committee meeting to order. Today's Wednesday, August 5th. This meeting's being recorded and is also closed captioned, and it is also livestreamed on Facebook. So a lot of ways that we can sort of communicate with each other. Dr. Beata, before I turn it over to you, I, as the chair, would just like to enter something into the public record, if that's okay. So earlier today, I received two bits, two emails from citizens who were able to share with the school committee their perspective on options for reopening of schools. The first was a recommendation for a full return to school model. The second was a recommendation for a hybrid within a hybrid school model whereby K through 5 students would return full-time. Other students would be remote. So I want to make sure that we do put that into public record. I want to make sure that our community members know that those bits of information that we receive absolutely will be part of our deliberation and sort of thought process. So we appreciate that. It's really, always really helpful to get different perspectives. So are there any objections to me sort of including those in public record? Nope, seeing none. I would like for you to enter those, please. So. We are all set to move forward. This meeting is sort of a continuation of our meeting from yesterday. It's important that if you weren't on yesterday, I hope everybody received an email earlier today from Norton Public Schools that actually invited you to sort of a question and answer sort of overview. Some questions that were discussed last night. It also included an opportunity for families and community members to ask questions in preparation for our meeting tonight. So if you did not receive an email earlier, please reach out to Norton Public Schools so we can make sure that you're on our email list. But that information was sent this afternoon. So Dr. Beata, if I can turn it over to you to continue the discussion on our back-to-school models.
Yes, so thank you, Madam Chair, very much. As you know, we, I just entered my email for folks who want to send me a direct question. I have responded to about seven direct emails that were sent to me since last evening with questions, very specific questions to them and to their family. So those folks have received their answers. We continue to plow through, if you will, working diligently on the different models as we, based on, I believe it's going to be tomorrow night's school committee meeting where you decide, or tonight, I'm not sure, that's really up to you folks, where we have to then write the actual report. I just actually received an email a few minutes ago that, just before this meeting, that specifically explains that the report needs to show how we can, whatever decision you make, we have to be able to walk in and out of the three models throughout the year if needed. And so we'll make sure that our report shows that. Plus, the executive summary, which is basically your decision and how we got to that decision, and then the the letter to the community, which is kind of a letter from the superintendent, just simply saying, this is how we got to this, and this is all the work, and so on. Kind of explains the background, foundation of how we got to the decision process. Today's been a day of answering some questions. We did release a Q and A earlier in the day, along with a attachment for further questions that people may have. We're seeing, if you will, the perspectives of, you know, everybody should be in school, it should only be remote, it should be hybrid, everybody's just like the decision you have to make and you've been listening to for quite a while. Everybody is still in play with, still kind of not really sure. We did start today to really look at our final reports prior to the decision. They will change based on the decision on our protocols and procedures around cleaning and sanitation and marking up the buildings and all of that, depending on what this looks like. And really, two other things that are important, just for everybody to know, is it's just a continuation of the local data showing some significant positive data for the town of Norton and where we are right now. And again, it goes to yesterday's comment that I made around how many folks have been dealing with this case. A further breakdown of this, thank you so, to a colleague of ours for forwarding this to me, shows very clearly 11 cases in Norton in the month of March. The height was April of 2020 at 97 cases, May at 43 cases, June at 11, July at 9, and currently August is at 1. So using the local data only, not necessarily, I haven't seen today's, I know it comes out after 5 o'clock. I have not seen today's data. I know that yesterday statewide, we were over 430, and that was a little concerning for the state, even though the, some of the other numbers were less. I haven't seen today's. I don't know if anybody has. I just haven't had time to see it. But if you, if we're using local data and information, not Georgia, bad piece of information to use, in my opinion, simply because issues like using masks, even using gloves early on, like we were asked to do, social distancing and all of that. Their schools are being asked to report fully back. They're not utilizing certain protocols. I just think it's bad data, to be quite honest. I would call it extreme data to use. I've seen some surveys out right now that are concerning, not locally in Norton, but regionally. So let's expand that regionally, that talk about what's the safest, hybrid or remote, kind of swing some data. I mean, if you're at home and you're not anywhere, I guess that's the safest place to be. So I have some concerns that the data being utilized. There's been some strong statements made statewide today. It is what it is. I think what we need to do is utilize the data, the information, and a lot of hard work that over 40 volunteers have put in to try to look at this from different angles and to provide answers to questions. You know, we can never guarantee, as a public institution, the safety of anybody. All we can do is work to provide the safest environment that we can every day, and that's on all topics beyond just C-19. But this is an issue that really pushes people in multiple directions in terms of their views. We are seeing some school districts move towards only one model. I think that's a piece of information, but I don't think that's necessarily telling of what the decision should be for Norton Public Schools. And I know many of you feel that same way. And I think, lastly, is we're trying to address that in some circumstances and in some issues, it's great to say you can come to school full-time, let's say, but how are you going to feed them and how are you going to get them there? Or I should say, how are you going to get them there and then how are you going to feed them? If you were just to open up the schools. Today, Boston announced that it's going to a remote model as decided by the building administrator, the building principal. They have 128 buildings, if I remember correctly. So they're going to have 128 different protocols in place based on their needs. They're a huge district. That might be a good way to define a one shoe doesn't fit all perspective. The only other thing that I can really add to yesterday's conversations is that what we found out from yesterday, I think, and I'll defer to my administrative colleagues on the call, and maybe some of you as school committee members, from what you've seen on social media and what you individually have received, is that you're damned if you do and damned if you don't in the decision that you make. People in general are being very kind, very professional, reassuring that they understand that we're in a difficult situation, but also have strong views in order to get to what they believe it is that we should be doing. And I, you know where I stand about why this is even at the table right now in terms of what the state has done. I will tell you that we did receive today, and all of a sudden, Commissioner of Education Zoom call for tomorrow at 12 noon. That's a very unexpected one, in my opinion. I'm not going to read into it, because every time I read into something, I'm wrong. But I'm wondering if there's some more information that's going to be shared with us that we don't know about right now. So hopefully, if you withhold your information or decision until tomorrow, I can maybe provide you another piece of information, another protocol, another something that will ease your decision-making process as a committee.
Thanks for sharing that. I have to say that I think we all recognize that this is a pretty fluid situation. So it will be really helpful for us to get an update tomorrow after your call with the commissioner. I think that, you know, obviously, I'm not sure what the information will be, but anything is helpful when we're making a decision. So we can start the question and answers. I just want to, once again, just remind you, remind our participants. So we have close to 270 people on this call. Just want to remind you, if you can, if you have a question, we'd love to be able to answer it. If you could put it into the Q and A box, not into the chat box. With so many participants, it gets a little confusing following all of the questions. So if we could have everybody put their questions in the Q and A, it would just help us make sure we don't miss anybody. One of the things that we did yesterday that we will continue to do today is if there is a question that's specifically directed to somebody, for example, if it's directed to Vinnie CRC on behalf of a special ed question, or to Wade Lazott on behalf of sort of a facilities question, we will be answering as we go. So it might not be answered live, per se, but it will be answered, and you can kind of read the answer. So we'll be trying to do that as well, just to help get all, get through sort of all of the questions in a timely way and make sure that everybody's question is answered. So please watch for those sort of answers in the Q and A box as well. So Jen, I don't know if I can turn it over to you.
Sure, I'm happy to do that.
And I don't know if there were questions that you sort of received today that maybe would kind of, we'd want to start with, or do you want to start with live questions?
We have just under 50 questions that were submitted to us from the survey that we sent home today. So I'd be happy to start there. And what I'll do is I will go through and read the questions, but I will skip over a question if we've already addressed it. So for example, if there is a question about what is the first day of school, and then it comes again later in the spreadsheet, I'll just skip it the second time around, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, so.
Will be.
Perfect, thank you. So first question talks about the challenges of families, whether we're remote for all, or, you know, parents let's remote learning. What will be the time and supervision required of parents? How will they work around that component? Karen, do you want to address that with the remote learning piece?
Well, depending upon the age of your child, I think it's really going to impact how much time you need to spend with them and directing them. But the hope is, once a decision is made, we'll have a full schedule for students where they will be meeting like they would their regular day. So getting them set up on their device in the morning, having a, you know, while their teacher's having a morning meeting, and then we would expect lessons to take place throughout the day. So perhaps finding a comfortable spot for learning. You know, there'll be breaks throughout the day, but depending, again, depending upon the age of your child, will depend on how much direct supervision.
Thank you, Karen. The next question is in regards to the different models. So will one of these models be chosen, or will each family be able to choose the thing, the model that they wanted to use? So the answer to that is that the school committee will be choosing the model, probably tomorrow night, whether we return to school fully, we enter hybrid model, or we go with a remote learning for all students. However, within that, parents always have the option to do a parent-selected remote learning. So if you are, if your family has some medical concerns, or you're not comfortable with your child returning to school, we are able to offer you remote learning that can be done in your home. So while the school committee makes the choice for the district, parents do have an opportunity for choice as well. Next question. If a parent chooses choice remote and the schools move to an alt-remote, what would the process be to be added to a class cohort?
I think the transition right now is that, once, once the decision is made, the very next thing we're going to do, do as early as Friday, no later than Monday, but I think we're aiming for Friday, is we're going to release a very specific survey to all families to make a decision on the, on the decision that the school committee made. In other words, if they go with full remote, there isn't a whole lot to decide. If they go with coming to school, then you might say, we want remote. If they choose hybrid, you might say, I want remote within that. So we're going to be asking everybody for a quick turnaround of that, probably seven days. And also ask questions about transportation, so that we can get some more specific numbers for that. Now, when a student, when, when we make any change within those systems, then what would happen is we would, at that point, potentially assign a student to a cohort at some point during that system. We think that that's going to be fluid as well. In other words, you decide to go remote, the district is in hybrid, you don't want your child to come in, and then things are going much more positive than you thought, or you're hearing a lot of things that are interesting to you, and you say, I'd like to go to the hybrid model, or the reverse of that. It's just going to be a fluid type of thing. We'll have to look at class sizes. We'll have to take a look at the demographics, if you will, like we always do when we put together classes on a year-to-year basis, or at the secondary level, specifically at the high school, where students have very specific courses that they're looking for, i.e. honors versus AP versus college prep, or a specific elective.
Thanks, Joe. The next question is concerning the hybrid model. Without some true teacher, from some true teaching from a teacher, students will again be lost, for an example, just like the spring. If a hybrid model is to be considered, this absolutely needs to be addressed. So this person is referring to those days where students are learning at home. And I think, you know, one of the things, we started working on our plan today and looking at the different definitions that we're using. So within our hybrid plan, we have, every student has at least two days in the physical building with their, with their teacher, and then they have a remote learning day where they have live instruction with their, in their full cohort. Those other two days, at this time, they are learning at home, typically independently, through teacher-directed assignments. Could be group projects, it could be online resources. Until we have a better understanding of where our staff is and how many students are actually going to be attending, it's difficult to say if we're able to reassign people to those roles. So we're hopeful that, you know, it's Dr. Beata just mentioned, we're asking people for a pretty quick turnaround in terms of our survey, and we're hopeful that that will give us a little bit more information if we're able to move people. I know that's a non-answer to the question at this point, and I apologize for that, but it is something that we're very conscious of and want to make sure that we're able to ramp up that hybrid model, if we're able to.
So Jen, I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to interject a little bit. I, I think there's a couple of things here that I would ask parents to do, depending on the decision that's made tomorrow. The first one is, it's wonderful to know that we're going to get $225 per student, or about half a million dollars. All of it is around PPE, and all of it has to be expended by December 30th, 2020. If we can get the legislature and the federal government to understand that we could actually move some of those funds into hiring staff to answer that question directly, we could do it tomorrow morning, right after the school committee vote tomorrow night, Friday morning. I could post for positions that I think I would need and have the funding for it. We do not have that ability. So we have to wait to see who chooses what after the decision is made. That's part one. Part two, after that decision is made, what do the cohort groups that are actually physically coming to school number? An example, if you have a kindergarten class with 24, with 22 students, and all of a sudden, and we had eight sections of it, so we have eight different sections of 22 students. So we'll just use 20 to make it an easy, an easy number. That's 160 students that are registered for kindergarten. If all of a sudden 20 students decide not to come, I may have available for the hybrid day of remote, an actual kindergarten teacher for those 20 students, as an example. But I won't know that until I actually have some really strong statistics, some actual data that is not as fudgible as a lot of the data that we collect with data, with surveys and everything else. You've made a decision, this is what we want. In between that, there's also many of you going to be looking for, how do we make sure that sibling groups are aligned in some way? Now, that has a direct impact on what a middle school, high school, or elementary schedule is going to look like in order to put you into that. So all of a sudden, it may be that that 50/50 number of the split hybrid of when students are in school versus when they're home could actually mean that there is actually a class that has more students, still six feet apart, because we're trying to take care of your sibling groups in order to make sure that that's a priority area. So we have to take care of a decision, followed by collection of parental decision, followed by, or at the same time, staff decision, followed by transportation, followed by what students have selected for courses at the secondary level, or support services they'd need under an IEP or 504, and then via inclusion or specialized classrooms, or whatever it may be, including specialized services like OTPT speech. And then we have to figure out, how does that work in the hybrid or remote or back-to-school model? And then we have to figure out the final stage, which is, can we meet all of the protocols and requirements with the Norton Teachers Association to get us actually physically back into the building via collective bargaining? So those are like 10 pieces of information that we really don't have concretely today. We will, after a vote tomorrow, because we can begin to really collect some data. And what happens when you change your mind, right? Because that's going to happen. And how do we implement that? Is that via a timestamp that says you will first come, first serve? Is it based on need? We've received a number of email communications today about students on an IEP and delivery of service. Those are individual conversations. You can't just broaden that discussion. I think every parent would say that my child has a need, but there are federal documents that really support those needs as well, that we have to follow. And then lastly, and as difficult in the hybrid model is, how do we make sure that if we are in the hybrid model, that we have kids and teachers coming together, while at the same time, when they're not together, and I said this last night, I don't think there's a parent on the school committee that is saying, if we're in a hybrid and I'm working, what am I doing with junior three days at their home? And they're in fifth grade, or third grade, or in ninth grade? And you just have some issues about leaving your child at home for X number of days by themselves. Those are still the key issues that need to be addressed. And sure, I guess I could eliminate a bunch of positions and go hire teachers, but I'm going to tell you something right now. Teaching, the teachings, the teachers aren't out there. You know, in terms of available slots, we've actually just been given the opportunity that we can have teachers teaching 50% out of their certification area. That's a pretty significant amount of time to sell somebody that they can teach 50% of the time in an area that they haven't been trained in, per se.
Thanks, Joe. When will there be a plan for the Little Lancers preschool program, Vinnie?
So we are working on the models now. Basically, when we have a vote of which model we're going to be using here, we'll be able to process that, look at transportation, some of the other factors around safety and protocol that we'll put into place, and then we'll be able to announce that.
Thanks, Vinnie. Karen, this one's for you. If parents choose a remote learning option, what does that look like? Will the student have a set teacher, and will it be asynchronous or have a synchronous component?
So it's, if the parent chooses to keep their child home, we have secured a software program currently for our high school and middle school students. And we, I just wrote it actually and answered it in one of the Q and A questions. And we're looking for one for our elementary. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education has some recommendations, and we're actually trying to vet those ourselves. But what that's going to look like is we're optimistic that we'll have staff members who will be able to facilitate that process. I'm not sure at this point, to be quite honest, how many students that we're going to have at different grade levels. You know, if we had 20 second graders, you know, we might try to get a second-grade teacher to be able to work remotely. But if we have students across all grade levels and all buildings, then we're going to be working, you know, to try to get some staff who might be willing to assist with that process. I can't really speak at this point to how much live teaching there will be. It'll be more of working through the software programs and perhaps being more supportive, checking in with students in the morning, taking attendance, that type of thing.
Thank you, Karen. Um, once kids are in school, do they still need to physically distance if each class is only 14 to 20 students? Yes.
Yes. Yes. So our classrooms right now, in a hybrid model, will go a minimum of six, in six feet, and in many areas, much more than that.
And students need to stay in their own space.
Yeah. One of the critical questions about this is, I just want you to think about the size of your child for a second, regardless of whatever grade they're in. And I want, I want you to think about a three-by-three box and being in that for six and a half hours a day. And now let's think about that three-by-three box, and let's make it more than six feet by six feet. That's a huge difference, especially when you want them to just stand and stretch, just move around their desk. At more than six feet, the potential that they can take off their mask, you know, and have a mask break. Almost impossible to do at three feet without moving people in and around of classrooms into other areas. And I mentioned this yesterday, and any of us that are in a physical space, that you just sit down and you're told, facing forward only, three-by-three versus more than six feet is a huge difference, even if it's just two days a week. And I can assure you, if somebody who, he himself has some issues with concentrating at times, I need the space to be able to just do what I need to do as a learner. And being stuck in that little area, I don't think would be good learning for a lot of students.
Thanks, Joe. What will the hybrid model look like for kindergarten students? How many days are they in school versus remote? So the elementary hybrid model is actually set up very similarly for students, whether in kindergarten or another grade. That, as of right now, Monday is our remote day for all students. So that means both cohorts of kindergarten students will be getting live instruction from their kindergarten teacher while they're at home. And then students would attend in person two days a week. So they would have live teacher-directed instruction at three days a week. On the other two days, they would have assignments from their teacher that focus either on review and application of the concepts that they learned the day before in school, or help prepare them for learning the next day. We know that at the kindergarten level, a lot of direction would be required in order for them to engage in certain types of activities. That's why we've looked at different online resources for students. For example, we have ST Math that helps them with mathematical concepts. We have Freckle that is actually an individualized student pathway, based on where they're performing. A lot of games and application for them. They may have a special on the days that they're remote. They may be checking in with another teacher. Again, a lot of those things are still kind of up in the air as we look at our staffing model for the fall, but those are just some examples of what that remote day would look like in the hybrid model.
Jen, can I just add something that I was reminded by one of our school committee members earlier today? You know, whatever the school committee votes tomorrow and finalizes, we all have to be, have a quick understanding of two things. Number one, the very vote that they take Thursday could be changed on Friday by the state in terms of situations and numbers and statistics. But the other thing that I've tried to assure the school committee of is that whatever model we are in in September, that we really utilize our data, our information, and things that are going on around us here in Norton, to continue to look at our models in a different way, to change our hard bar, hybrid model in kindergarten, or in 10th grade, or whatever grade, if we think that's going to be a good idea to do. This is not a September to June model at all. And as many of you know, and you've heard me say, I think that more than likely, at some point, we're in full remote. Maybe not. Maybe we're actually saying, you know what, let's attempt doing this with kindergarten, and this with sixth graders, and this with ninth graders. Whatever we think the best educational angle would be to get students Whatever we think the best educational angle would be um to get students more time face to face, um, I think is important. And I know that, that folks are worried about, you know, we have school choice students and we have staff that live in other states, and we have staff that live in other communities. And, and, and yes, that's all true. We also have a responsibility as adults to make sure that regardless of work, that we're doing the right things as employees dealing with students. And that means myself included, you know, you have to be careful about the socialization outside of work. And I've said that it's not a happy thing to say to employees uh or even my own family. But you know, as we get, as, as all of this is coming on, all of us need to be more conservative in our approaches, for lack of a better phrase, in order to make sure that we are as safe as we can be um when we return to school. You know, it's, it's going to be interesting to see how many of us are not happy about the decision, but yet we're seeing all over our soccer fields, or we're seeing all over our restaurants, or we're seeing all over town. Um, we have to make this a concerted effort um like other countries have done, and that's not the American spirit. I understand that. I clearly understand that. But we have a responsibilities as educators and leaders and families with children to make sure that we're trying to make sure that being in school on a regular basis. And yes, part of it is the honor system, and I know all of us hate that process. Um, one of the reasons why uh the state eliminated and even CDC eliminated everything to do with taking temperatures was the concern around, around the, the, you know, the, the uh positive negatives, if you will. Um, or uh, uh, you know, people taking Tylenol an hour before they come to school, even though they might have COVID. Now they don't have a, a temperature. We're going to need a concerted effort from families, understanding that anybody at any point who is sick and not well, who comes into the building may in fact be causing more of a public health issue than just they themselves having a cough.
Um, there's actually a couple of questions here that um ask about the hybrid schedule and why we are recommending a alternating day schedule for our students. Um, instead of, um, for example, a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday off, a Thursday, Friday. Um, and really what the hybrid, you know, the hybrid working committee had about 13 people on it. There were educators, uh, parents, community members, and we spent a lot of time loo- looking at different models. Um, we, um, and ultimately, what we decided was that the more often that a student could be in the classroom or the more um regularly they could see their teacher, um, we felt that that had the biggest impact. We had a lot of concerns about students having a week on, a week off model, where they wouldn't be in the building for an entire week. Um, we had a lot of concerns about um coming out of that weekly schedule and how challenging it would be to get back into the routine. For those of you who are teachers on the line, we all know what that Monday morning after February break feels like. Um, and literally every Monday morning would be that Monday morning. Um, so right away, we decided we really didn't like that. Um, we looked at AM and PM sessions, and we had some concerns about the ability to clean in between sessions um and how difficult that might be for our custodial staff. Um, and then um ultimately, we decided on this every other day model, because it would only give students a day at a time when they are home without seeing or interacting with, with their classroom teacher. And you know, I, I spoke with Wade LaZott, who's our director of facilities, had a lot of conversations about cleaning. Um, and I'll let Wade, Wade speak to those concerns about not needing a day in the middle of the week for deep cleaning.
So we are, we, we are all professional um in the custodial field, and, and the guys are willing to do whatever we need to do. And this all comes down to the safety of the kids and really what's, what's best for them. So um Jen, with her team, having the discussions that they had, if they feel the Tuesday, Thursday, Wednesday, Friday is best for the kids, then that's what we'll do. Um, we're, we're willing to pull through and do whatever we need to do um to, to make this transaction as smooth as possible for everybody.
Hey Jen and Wade, I think it's also important to recognize, um, and I know it was said yesterday, and people can look at some of our answers from yesterday. But we are at, at a point of PPEs where we're ready to open. Um, just today, I was actually in the building, um, walking down corridors and hallways and stuff. And we already have the sanitation sanitizing uh pump machines already available as you come into the building or exit the building, the PPEs and all of that, and we're looking at other options. Um, air handlers and all of that have been adjusted, uh pumping more air into our buildings than we ever have, uh increasing our air filters where we can, based upon the, the units that are available in the buildings. Uh, and I think lastly is, this isn't about a deep cleaning. It's about a cleaning constantly. You know, you can't, you can't count on a deep cleaning. You got to constantly be quote, deep cleaning. And our goal in our, in our preventative planner that we, we will release um based on what happens speaks very definitive about um what we expect from our custodial crew, uh but also support from our staff and administrators um in terms of uh supporting those classrooms and cleaning. Um, we've had a lot of discussions about teachers traveling, not students traveling in some of our grades where we can do that. That's probably going to come to fruition, more than likely. Um, that causes other stresses, but we just think that that's a better model right now. Um, and where we can't do that, then we have to come up with scenarios around how many students are actually traveling a hallway, what directions look like, uh, one-way streets, if you will, in the hallways. Uh, no two ways, uh, because the hallways might be, you know, too close to each other. Uh, there'll be markings all, all over our buildings about it. And, and really, at the end of the day, trying to get students with missing the least amount of time of not being in front of somebody in the hybrid model as possible. And none of it is exactly what we would actually want.
Uh, there's a question here, and it's pretty specific, but I'm, I'm going to take the question out of it. Concerns about um students that do well with flexible seating and movement breaks, and how we are going to help support those students within this new model?
Well, I, I think there's a couple of things. Um, first of all, you will see classrooms with very limited flexible seating. Um, again, mandate, or if the requirement is facing forward, individual desks. Um, so that's going to be, on that question, that's, that's a concern. Um, in terms of breaks, our, our idea, the way that we see it, and again, we'll spend time with the teachers at the opening of school, depending on where, where this goes. If it's in the hybrid model, students are in and out, I think that the model there would be that we're probably breaking, um, let's say 45 minutes instruction, direct instruction, followed by five to 10 minute stretch break, if you will, mask break, those types of things. Um, I think if you're in the hybrid model, then you have to took a lick, you've got to take a look at breaks that transition you um in the room, excuse me, I should say, in the remote model, you have to take a look at transitioning from one classroom meeting like this and direct to teaching to another. So you're going to need, you're going to need time to go from one Zoom meeting or one Google Classroom to another. So again, I think we're looking at a good seven to 10 minutes bathroom break, transition to your next class type of thing. And all of those things are things, again, that we'll know a little bit more um specifically. But when it comes to breaks, mask breaks are mandated. I think uh stretch breaks, if you will, because our students, especially at the elementary level, are not used to just sitting in a desk facing forward are, are a required area. I would say that those are time on learning, because we're trying to teach them proper safety protocols um during a pandemic, and I think there's some learning to do there. Um, and then lastly, um, how do we teach students about, you know, staying in their area? Uh, especially our younger students. I mean, I can, can any of us who have had children um in preschool think about what's going to happen in a preschool and kindergarten? I mean, kids are kids, they want to be with each other, they want to hug each other, they want to poke at each other. So we, we're going to spend a lot of time in that socialization piece, making sure their masks are kept on. Um, it's something that you're going to be hearing about me soon after the vote, which is, you know, if you're not using a mask with young children now, um, you need to start doing that with them at home as a, as a transition to school.
One question that's come up several times is when we're going, when the school committee is going to vote on this question? Um, there is not going to be a vote tonight, is that correct, Carolyn?
Um, we we were, the way that it was presented was that we could vote either tonight or tomorrow night. I think after sort of our last night session, knowing how many questions there were, we thought we would um feel more comfortable allowing tonight just to be an opportunity to answer all questions. So we are going to vote tomorrow.
Great. Thank you for clearing that up for us. Perfect. Thank you.
Hey Jen, can I, can I just interject really quickly? Because one of the, one of the questions that was around that had asked if that could be extended. And while it's, while it's not likely, I do want to say that there, there is a caveat to that. If, if something materially changes, and a good example would be if the state comes out with a new mandate sometime in the middle of the day tomorrow, that materially makes one of the options better or worse. So we, we may have to actually push that out. If, if something changes, you know, if conditions on the ground change materially and an option becomes either not available, or again, considerably better or worse, there is a chance that tomorrow night might not be the day. But it's again, un- unlikely, but just throwing that out there.
Thanks, Sinaz. I actually um didn't take that into consideration, knowing that there is a noon time phone call tomorrow with the Commissioner of Education. I think that we probably just want to have that sort of also verbalize that um it's very true. If information is shared that changes the dynamic at all of what we've been talking about for weeks, um, then that will be discussed tomorrow night at our meeting.
Perfect. Thank you.
I think also, just one more thing, you know, I know that Dr. Bayetta has said this a few times, but I think it's worth just pointing out while we're on this topic again, that even if we do vote tomorrow, things could change at any point in time. Um, through our governor, through like what you guys just said, different information. So people have to understand that it's a very fluid situation, and we are, you know, dealing with this day in and day out. I mean, this is, this does not leave our minds for one second of any day. So I just need people to understand that even though we do vote, there still may be a change that happens.
Thanks, Sherry. Um, what is our goals for music education within each of these models?
Well, it, it, if, if we have a hybrid model, uh, then we have some live opportunities um that can take place in as a father of, of a musician, I think that's important. One of the things that I've tried to commit to is finding as many different ways as we can to support the fine arts. Um, we have a history as an administration in the last seven years of building back our fine arts program almost every year by hiring staff and or expanding our programs, uh, because they were some of the more hard hit areas a few years back. So I've made a commitment that I want to continue to hold, hold on to those. So there are opportunities within the arts, uh, music, uh, online that we would, um, if you will, bring forward with our teaching staff to utilize in order to support students. It might be more in some areas around music theory, um, and individual performance. For, for example, you can take an AP art studio class online right now. There's an actual class on AP art studio that you can take, and students have taken in the past. You can do the same thing with music, you can do it with STEM, you can do it with engineering, robotics, any and all of those types of courses. So I think it's just a matter of us really um making sure that we have the online platforms and availability to support not only the Google Classroom that teachers might be working off of, but in general, platforms that will enhance the curriculum. Yes, there's some teaching that the, the learning that the teachers need to do around the platform, but around the content, it should be an area that if they're highly qualified, which our staff is, they should be, feel comfortable with. It's more about the technology piece and how to teach it from that way than it is from actually a new content.
Vinnie, this question's for you. Um, a few questions here regarding when students that are on IEPs will be alerted to their schedule. So for example, um, how does a parent know if their child is considered high risk? Or will be included in that subgroup that is going to be um coming on a more frequent basis?
So if you belong to, if your child is attending, sorry, I have a, had to go outside here. Um, if your child uh is attending one of the programs, uh specialized programs, then you would definitely be invited to the uh in-person model as far as the hybrid goes, um, coming in four days. For those who are in late inclusion or receive related, just related services, uh, those decisions will be have to be made based on some of the factors that Dr. Um, Bayetta had talked about in terms of the number of students coming, um, the staff that we have available, uh, individual review, uh, once we have students uh in uh working with our teachers, uh, we have a process that we're setting up in terms to review their sort of progress, their regression compared to their peers. Um, and we'll be working with our staff to, to finalize that, that process and then begin to welcome students into the program, uh, into the buildings. Again, it would depend on health and safety, uh, rooms within the cohorts, there's a lot that, that has to be taken into consideration. Um, Desi's guidelines are pretty, were, were um pretty clear that certain programs uh and certain levels of need need to be brought in as, as much as possible.
Thanks, Vinnie. Uh, there's a question here regarding um if we've looked at survey data to um see how many students we have, have planned on coming back. Um, if they're willing to return, uh, that's what the survey is that's going to go out on Friday morning. Um, you know, we have designed a survey that is student specific, so we can really track those answers. Um, and hopefully that will give us the information that we need um in order to make some of these um decisions. Um, so next question here is, will students be able to transition between classes if they go from remote to hybrid or from hybrid to remote? Um, I don't know what that means in, in terms of transition from class, between classes. Um, if the person who asked that question on the call wanted to put in the Q and A to clarify, that would be great. Um, the question is, will preschool and special education be remote or the special education programs if the district is remote?
Um, again, it would depend on how and why we were, we, we went remote. If the governor closes us down, um, and nobody can go into the building, then, then no, uh, special I would have to be remote. Um, however, if um we did that on the local level and there was some room in order to bring in those certain populations that we talked about earlier, then those folks um would, would, we'd have the option of bringing them in, yes.
All right. Thank you. Um, clarification question regarding what remote learning will look like for younger children. Um, will they be required to have a parent there facilitating it throughout the day? Um, so I'm assuming that this means remote for all. Karen?
Um, I, I think we answered this earlier. Depending upon the age level, you know, if you have a first grader who might need more direction, um, there could very well be need to have an adult or an older sibling or relative be able to uh redirect and so forth. But we're expecting if we're fully remote, that uh students will be, you know, on the computer um or iPad and be able to connect with their teacher and classmates. It will be time for breaks throughout the day, um, activity breaks and such. Um, we don't expect, you know, a full day, you know, seven hours, as Dr. Bayetta says, of on the um computer, but we are mandated to meet certain requirements.
Thanks. All right. Will there be two nurses in two nurses' office in each, offices in each of our buildings to help prevent high-risk populations from, from potential exposure? Um, and how can we help keep parents accountable for making sure their child is healthy before we, um, sending them to school?
Let's answer the first, the second one first. I can't. Um, I, I don't know how to address an issue of, you know, parent responsibility. Uh, parents don't like to be told how to parent. I think I've told, said that through the years that I've been here. It's frustrating, but we are asking people to be as honest as they can be. Um, in terms of, you know, that this is a public health issue. Um, and, and that they have a part in that. And I can tell you right now, I don't really have a problem after I find out of a situation that somebody was doing the wrong thing, telling them exactly what I think. Um, might cost me some points with some people, but uh, that's not a threat. I just think if you know something, it's kind of like, if you know something, say something, let's act on it. As a parent, I think that's our responsibility. In terms of the first question, we currently have uh full-time nurses in, in all of our buildings, and we've set up um secondary areas for potential COVID cases. Um, remember that the COVID cases situations are also one where parental responsibility becomes key, because the idea is to get students out of the building and to uh specialists, if you will, their medical provider, emergency room, whatever the situation is. Um, we are contemplating a floating nurse position pending funding right now. In other words, someone that would be more responsible to support the schools. Um, and that would be our sixth nurse. Um, and then we also will utilize the protocols and procedures that will be coming out around the Mass Department of Public Health, the local Department of Public Health, my office, and the nurse's office as it pertains to any type of a positive situation. But we currently have full-time nurses in each building only.
Thanks, Joe. There's a couple of questions in the chat that I just want to address, because we just talked about um the survey that's going home. The question is, why are we not surveying students beforehand, um, before we make a decision? So we already have surveyed families. Um, and you know, that came, I apologize, my dog is barking in the background. Uh, so we have surveyed families, and ultimately, this next survey is really, it's a commitment from families. If we, if the school committee votes to do X, Y, and Z, do you plan on sending your child yes or no, and giving us information so that now we can plan? Karen, did you want to add something there?
I did want to just add, we did survey students. At the end of the school year, we sent out a survey to all students who had Norton email addresses.
That's right. Thank you. I forgot about that. Might as well have been six years ago because it's been a long summer. So thank you. Okay. We talked about remote learning. Kindergarten screening. Yes, we will have kindergarten screening. It is scheduled for June 18th and 19th. I met earlier today with Mrs. Bolton and Mrs. Luke to discuss some more of those fine tuning situations. And information should be going out in the coming days to kindergarten families. And yes, kindergarten students are required to wear masks in the classroom. There's another question here about parents not receiving surveys. They're all out, they've all been sent out. The June survey was sent out on June 13th and it was sent through Blackboard through. So if you receive our snow calls or if you received the FAQ document this afternoon, that was how it was sent out. The August survey has not gone out. It goes out on Friday morning.
Can I just make a suggestion, Jen, on this? So we did a bunch of updates just today even. We do have a couple of situations where people don't have access. So we're taking care of that manually. But if, for whatever reason, you are not receiving those, you need to go to the Let's Talk on the district site and you need to send an email. It's a direct communication. You need to tell us. You can't say you're anonymous. We cannot and will not respond to anonymous. It's just a waste of my time to respond to anonymous. So you need to put in there your information, what the email should be. If your student's last name and your name is different, you need to tell us that. And we will make sure that we have that updated for you and then verify it with you.
I would also recommend checking your spam and your junk folders as well. Sometimes the emails from Blackboard get pushed there directly.
Jen, just if I can interject, especially if you have Comcast. Comcast was blocking Blackboard.
Okay, good to know. Okay. Sorry, some of these questions are very wordy. If a child receives free breakfast and lunch, how will our child be able to pick up the meals in a remote model? Matt?
Yeah, so we just had a meeting today where we started the conversations of how we're going to do food service. It's still very preliminary at this point. We're kicking around a lot of ideas and it really is dependent upon what the vote ends up being. But so if we find ourselves in a hybrid model, we plan to on Monday utilize busing services. When we're in a remote situation, utilizing busing services on Monday to deliver to bus stops. Then on the Tuesday, Thursday, and the Wednesday, Friday, the students that come in will be fed at school and then will be given a backpack lunch to bring home for the next day. We're going to have to, we haven't just figured out every piece of it yet. So the remote piece where it's anyone who chooses to go full remote, we're going to have to figure that out. It's going to take some more conversations just to figure it out. However, one of the ideas we're kicking around is maybe a later day, like an evening pickup, so that parents that have to work are able to come and pick up at that time. There's still a lot of discussion that has to go into it.
Thanks, Matt. Will its student recommendations for classes be overridden in order to place them in certain cohorts? So for example, if a child is recommended to take an honors math class or AP stats. Vinnie, you're very.
That's not currently our plan. Our hopes is to be able to provide everybody with the classes that they chose. There may be some restrictions to add drop, however, depending on, again, some of the things we had talked about in terms of numbers and cohorts.
Thanks, Vinnie. Question about how we will enforce mask wearing in the school. Not all families believe that mask wearing is important. And how will we enforce this rule with students?
Say that one again, sorry.
Some families don't believe that mask wearing is important. How will we enforce it with students throughout the day?
It's going to be a requirement of the district unless there's a medical condition and/or a behavioral condition that requires such. It's not a choice.
Does the Department of Education need to approve our district plan?
Thank goodness, no.
I'm just skipping through some of the ones we've already addressed. Some concerns here about the remote learning, the parent choice remote learning and the fact that at this point, we can't really say if they'll have live connection with a teacher, that, you know, it's not a good enough option, which I understand family's concerns, I certainly do.
Can we address this a little bit? So public education just became a parental choice public education system overnight. And none of that with the potential that we could actually say, let's hire people to make sure the public education has a remote option. We're being asked to do in a hybrid model, both hybrid and remote, and then give parent choice to that remote or as well. So we've gone from a system where it's a very brick or mortar type of situation. Yes, there are some, there are some schools out there that are considered public charter schools that are online and they have full-time only staff that work for them. Now we're being asked to take our approach to teaching and learning and provide it via how people perceive the decision of their own family as it relates to a pandemic and returning to school based on that decision. I'm not sure that that's ever been offered before. The offer, the choice before, and I'm not trying to be, you know, brutish, if you will. The offer before was you can come to us or you can homeschool your child or you can go to private school. Within our public domain, we're being asked to shift into providing all these different options without actually also being afforded the opportunity to hire staffing. I'd love to be able to say that I'm going to hire one teacher in every grade for the sole purposes of teaching those grades. Once I get to sixth grade, I need an English, math, science, social studies, word language, just to say it was the core, although I'd want to teach everything. And then I got to do the same thing at the high school. It's just not part of it. I think that there needs to be some really interesting conversations about streaming and zooming of classes. But I have to tell you that those are really difficult conversations when the technology isn't there or available or the, if you will, the opportunity to be able to do both. I can think of a building in our district where that is easier than it is anywhere else. So do we try that? Do we put that on the table for discussions? I think so.
Thanks, Joe. In order for parents to decide on the best placement for their children and for at-risk staff to have informed conversations with their healthcare providers, we need to know if students will take off their masks in their classrooms for lunch and mass breaks and will be the same protocol in all schools.
I don't know if I've heard anything as a person who's seen their doctor about masks being taken off and on as part of the protocol for a reason why somebody doesn't come to work. I think that's an individual decision and conversation that needs to take place. I would actually be challenging that conversation with the employee and their doctor via the FMLA process. I think we're getting into these little nitty gritty questions that are really around bigger issues than what we're talking about. The decision really at the forefront of this right now is a hybrid model, a full remote. We know exactly where the Massachusetts Teachers Association stands on this. They were at it again today. We know where the AFT is and we know where the BTU is. That's great. They're not in Norton. We have relationships. We're trying to establish the best protocols and ways to do it. If we can't come to agreements, we're going to be back at the drawing table. That's part of the process. But I'm a little driven backwards by a state mandate that really speaks to the issue of telling school districts what to do based on Chapter 150E collective bargaining rights. I think it's about relationships and conversations. And so any employee who decides that they can't work, I'm fine with. I am 100% supportive of. But I also have a job to do where I have to require that you establish the appropriate communications from your medical provider to my office via FMLA in those types of situations. I am as concerned for families that work for Norton Public Schools, but I can't take almost 400 employees and try to figure out what the daycare is going to be for 400 employees. What I can do and have done is reached out to Champions. I have a phone call back and forth with the YMCA right now. Champions has reached out to Kinder Care on behalf of our employees to see if there's any openings. That's what we're trying to do. That's what we're trying to establish. Many districts aren't even having those conversations. I support the employees who have medical conditions and can't be at work. I understand it clearly. I will support it to the extent that I can and within the law that I'm provided. I think I have a pretty solid track record with employees that I'm probably one of the more flexible superintendents I've ever worked with and that I want to be friendly to families. But at the same time, I have the public education of 2,400 students that is at the top of my list along with their safety and that of the employees. So please have those conversations as a parent with your doctor about, can my child go to school? This is the time to do it. We have students who are on air machines, who have severe asthma, who have severe diabetes. I know some of those kids personally. I've met them, I've spoken to them. Yet have those conversations with your doctor so that we can know more about what your needs are and what your supports are. And I would say the same thing for our employees. This is about making sure that we're safe if in fact we have significant health issues, if in fact there's an uptick of situations in the state. If in fact Norton goes from one person in the month of August as of yesterday's date to all of a sudden we have 75, to all of a sudden we have 100 and we haven't even come back to school. All of a sudden, the school committee and I are going to have some different conversations about what we potentially are doing or changing. Or the state comes in. If the numbers are correct, it's over 500 positive cases today. If that's correct, and I haven't verified it yet, that's an increase of another 60 to 70 positive cases from yesterday. So we have a trek going up of positive cases in the Commonwealth. Hence the comment that the decision and any decision the school committee makes could actually be changed by the governor himself tomorrow.
Thanks, Joe. Is it an option in a hybrid model for 10 students to be in the classroom with a live teacher and the other 10 students to zoom in? So I guess live streaming, I guess would be that.
We want to have, we want to look at those types of options. But here's the key. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars of technology. Never mind the training. That could be something that we could potentially work around, but be costly. It's not as easy as folks thinks. And I'll give you an example. If you're doing that and you have your laptop, and Karen, correct me if I'm wrong because you're my tech person, but if I remember the conversation the other day, I was talking about how, oh, maybe we could do that. And it became this whole thing of, if you have the technology up in the room using your own laptop and then you want to also zoom with the classroom, you need more than just one particular laptop, let's say, or another device to support your classroom. Or you need the document camera. Or you need the, it's a significant amount of technology that most public schools right now don't have. But is it something we've said no to? No, it's definitely on the table of discussions we need to have, maybe piloting them to see how it works. Again, without getting into specifics, I think there's one building in our district that it's significantly easier to contemplate that than it is in other parts of the district.
Great. Okay. If you want, if you would just start remote and come back hybrid or start fully remote, how can we be sure that students will be prepared academically to rejoin their classmates?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think that, you know, one of the things that we've had a lot of conversations about with our team is the importance of making sure that we're focusing on accelerating learning for all students throughout this year. It would be very easy as a district for us to say, we weren't in school physically from March until June last year. So our second grade class is going to need to start with first grade curriculum. They missed all of these skills last spring. But we can't do that. And the reason we can't do that is if we start with previous grade level curriculum, we will never get through the current grade level curriculum. So our goal this year is really to focus on current grade level standards with all of our students and then filling in gaps as we need to. One of the best examples that I can think of is if you're teaching children how to multiply and divide fractions, but last year they didn't quite get all the lessons in on finding common denominators. You're going to go back and review those common denominator lessons before you really teach them the next skill. And I'm not a math person, so hopefully that's a good, accurate, you know. It'll be the same thing with students that are coming back from an online model to a hybrid model or to being in the classroom full-time. We will continue with our grade level standards and making sure that we're working with students that may have a gap just as we always do. So I'm not too concerned about students having to move back and forth if that's the case. Next question here. Is there any consideration going to be given to elementary students who are not able to stay home alone? For example, single families, parents are working. Is there any way that we as a district can help to support them?
Anything to do with parenting, I think, and how to support students at home is the number one flaw in anything to do with the hybrid and remote learning system. I don't know how else to tell you that except as a parent, having those discussions with an older child. And the idea that the social emotional development of a child of being home by themselves for three days a week is as serious a concern as a father. So we're going to do our damnedest to try to find ways after we have some, if you will, hard data around how to try to manipulate things in a way that provides for us to support families. But I can't tell you that I have the best answer as your superintendent or as a father.
How would a lunchtime work for the high school? I don't know that I know the answer to that one.
Well, a couple of different things. Depending on the model that we're in, we're looking at everything such as pickup, grab and go. We're looking at delivery. We are in the process of ordering more tents for outside of our schools to be strategically put outside for the purposes of allowing, especially our older kids who already at the high school actually go outside to the picnic areas, maybe setting up more picnic areas, at least for the months of September and early October. But right now it's grab and go or delivery that we're going to be utilizing depending on the grade level. But specifically at the high school, I think you'll see a combination of both.
Thank you. Are there ways that families who are healthcare professionals can assist us in any of the infection control training, support with the local board of health?
I'm always looking for anyone who has an expertise that's willing to support us. We're being very careful about volunteers in the buildings, but we will have protocols for that. And if in fact you come from the area of healthcare, I would love to have a conversation about how we could potentially utilize your expertise to support us. We're just going to have to have some significant protocols and procedures in place around anyone who's volunteering. If you have expertise and you're just sharing it with us or you want to be part of our working committee or you want to be part of providing information through third parties, we're happy to have that as we always do. But volunteers is one of the areas that we're being asked to really take a look at, especially if they're going to be physically in the building and not on a consistent basis. So if you said, I want to volunteer only on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and that's going to be your standard day, we can make that work. But if all of a sudden it's a change to Wednesdays and Fridays or next week it's Mondays, we're probably going to have to say that not at this time. Are we allowed to do that because there's so much change in your own schedule?
For hybrid and remote learning, is it possible for grades to be updated online more frequently? And it's challenging for students and families to keep up when they don't know what their grade is.
338 confirmed cases. So I take that number back. I did get a confirmation. Thank you to my colleague for sending that. So I want to correct the record 338. So it's. Thank you to uh, my colleague for sending that. So I want to correct the record three hundred and thirty-eight, so it's it's. Um, slightly in this down from yesterday, I think by twenty. Can you repeat the question again?
Sure. Um, can, I just dismissed it, sorry. Um, can grades be posted more frequently for both hybrid and remote?
Yeah, so so let's talk about, that's a great question. So not only is attendance something both in all models that we have to uh, be holding kids accountable for. But we'll be holding both students and teachers for grading on a regular basis. Uh, on our VR standards based report card at the elementary level and then our numerical and letter grades at the secondary level. Um, and and the idea behind that is to really hold students accountable, um, for the work that they're doing. Um, regardless if it's in the school, in in their direct time, or if it's uh, an online assessment, or if it's in a project based. Um, during their their remote time, um, the idea is to provide um, regular grading. Um, on a more traditional platform, if you will, than than we saw in the spring. Um, at all levels, except for maybe the high school where we had some continuity, um, although there were areas there that we definitely have to to do better.
Thanks. All right. Um, in a hybrid situation, how will we take attendance on a remote learning days? Um, and how can we ensure that students will be actively engaged on those remote days? Um, I think that's something that we're still trying to figure out exactly what that will look like in terms of staffing to oversee that piece. Uh, making sure that we're checking in with students. Um, students will have assignments that are responsible for on those remote days um, at all levels. Um, so again, that's one of those nitty gritty things that we haven't quite figured out yet, but I promise that we will get you details on that.
I I think Jen, thanks, thanks for saying it that way because it's important. So let's be very, you know, let's just be straightforward and honest. In a hybrid model, tomorrow morning and your child's in remote. I currently do not have a physical body to support your child's education during the remote time, currently. My goal is to try to figure out how to make that work in the hybrid model. If all students go remote, then all students are remote. They're not with a teacher physically at any point. Um, that's a whole different animal to this process. But right now, in in that process. We currently do not have an answer and I can assure you, I had a. Call this morning with a local superintendent. We had a discussion about trying to find ways where two public school systems that in many ways are alike in terms of our demographics. Um, where we would work together, us and them, to try to build staff members to work with kids during remote. Um, because they're home and instead of just um, not being able to come to work, they're our remote teacher. Because they have a a medical reason to not be um, at work.
Okay, um. Well, we have a parent orientation to this. It's a lot of information. Yes, it certainly is a lot of information. We're hopeful that our plan, once it's published, will um, give parents information that they're looking for. Oh, this is an interesting question. It's actually the opposite of what I've seen typically. Is it possible to have siblings be on different alternating days? So that parents can work with just one elementary student at a time. I love that idea.
I can almost guarantee you that one.
I would say that if that's something that you're really interested in, please reach out and let us know. Um, because we're going to be working to try and get families together. So if we have flexibility, we certainly want to take you up on that. So. Uh, thanks, Jean, for that great question. Um, okay, let's see, what else do we have here? Um, who will clean in between the AM and priest, AM and PM preschool classes? Wade?
So we have a cleaning protocol in place, um, that um, will make sure that the uh, personnel on duty will get into those areas. With our disinfecting guns, as long as we have the allowed time to spray everything down and clean wipe down, um, before the next group comes in.
Um, have we looked at the Catholic school model? A lot of local Catholic schools are opening at a full time. Um, with in-person teaching. Um, I think, you know, I don't want to speak for Joe, but I think the difference is um, just our space. In terms of making sure that we're able to get our, all of our students in the buildings at six foot distancing, uh, which we are not able to do. Um, I don't know what specific, specific schools you're um, referring to, but it could be in an enrollment difference. Um, we would be able to fit students at three feet in most cases, um, not in all of our rooms of the high school. But um, six feet is is not an option to bring all of our students back.
I think the delivery model, um, in terms of um. What I always call the students who didn't learn differently, I think transportation. Um, not having to deal with a million dollar or in our case, almost million and a half million dollars worth of transportation. Um, with specific rules makes a significant choice or difference. I do know that there are Catholic schools that are only going to the hybrid, um, in my area where I reside. And I know two Catholic schools as of this week have not made a final determination on what level they are. Because their families and my family are friends and they're frustrated that a decision hasn't been made yet because other schools have done that. I think the last part is, um. You know, they, there might be some type of approach here that I that I don't know about, um, that's coming to play. Um, they don't have to follow uh, the DSE protocols and rules. Um, at one point, they, there was a discussion that they were going to challenge the idea that the governor could even shut them down. Uh, because then they're not under the auspices of public education, but that didn't happen. Um, I do know a couple of the local private schools are looking to open. I believe that they've made statements that they're open, opening. Um, but in general, um, I know that some of the elementary schools that are opening their class sizes traditionally are smaller to begin with. Um, and have more space. Um, so yes, there is a, there's a discrepancy around all of these things. Um, and there are different driving factors behind all of them.
All right. Is kindergarten going to be based on a half day or a full day schedule? It's a full day schedule. Um, okay. If a child has a fever and needs to stay home but is feeling okay, will they be allowed to come back to school? Um, will they be allowed to attend remotely until they're fever free? Or will they, they be considered absent and have to make up work?
There'll still be an absent protocol procedure for some, something like a a situation that's a day or two. Like you would if it was during the flu season or something like that. But if we're talking about some, a situation where you can't, excuse me, get her out of control. Or it becomes a long COVID situation, let's say, then we would have to work with, we would want to work with the family, not have to. We would want to work with the family. To provide um, the the move to remote education to support that family and that student not falling further behind.
Um. There's a question here regarding teacher training. Uh, we will get a ton of information out, probably beginning next week to staff regarding teacher training. And um, ultimately, the short answer is yes. Um, anything that we're requiring to you, we will have training on. During those ten days of PD, um, and we will also have options for staff, um, if they want to integrate something new into their. Classroom routine, um, for, and there's a lot of staff on this call, so make sure you check out all of our Norton University offerings. There's some awesome stuff going on right now. Um, that is led by our own teachers. Um, would preschoolers ever attend, ever attend on a hybrid model, Vinnie?
I think that would have to be something we we need to talk about on an individual basis, um, because of the way the the. Currently, our our program is going to run, so I think it would depend on the, that individual child's need. Uh, and if it's a, a model student that's been, that's asking that question, a parent of a model student, um, yes, we could, we could discuss that as well.
Thank you. Is the high school curriculum the same as um, pre-COVID? Yes, it is. We still stop, follow the same frameworks. Uh, we still have the same expectations for our students. We have new resources that we have made available or will be making available to our staff to help support them. Um, in both the hybrid and the remote model should be enter that phase. Um, but yes, the curriculum expectations are the same. There's a question regarding the survey that will be going out to families. Um, we have mentioned that it is a mandatory survey. And we're looking for families to give us some information about their plans for the fall. Um, is their decision reversible? Um, should new information come to light and they decide to change their mind? You're muted, hold on.
Right. Can you explain that a little bit more?
Um, so hypothetically, if we send out the survey on Friday and you say, yes, my child will attend an X model. Um, and then cases across the state really go up and you've decided that you're no longer feeling comfortable with this. Could you?
I mean, we're going to try to be flexible with families, but at at some point, we would have to say to you, well, at this time, you're going to have to give us some time. To give you, your child a new schedule or a new, you know, so on. And we would try, of course, to meet the starting school deadlines and all of that. But I couldn't assure you that that would happen. I mean, I, I think we could have it done by nine sixteen. I think there's a couple of discussions here too. One would be, are we seeing an uptick statewide, regionally, Norton? Bristol, Bristol County only, uh, neighboring communities only. Um, I think those are all pieces of data that are going to become very important for the day-to-day decisions that we are potentially in front of us. It's a very fluid. Um, situation.
Great. In a hybrid model, um, I actually think we have already answered, someone skipped it. Um. If we were to start off in a remote model, um, could we then move to hybrid and then full day? And do we know how long it would be between each of those? Areas or models?
Would take that one?
Uh, I would say that, um. It really all depends on the numbers, right? I mean, um, I I think that, um, you know, we have made a commitment to reviewing. Um, our model, um, at least every four weeks as a district and making sure that whatever model we're in, um, is. Appropriate for the time and for for our community. Um, but really, none of us can predict what the future holds in this case. And um, it could be that we make a decision and, um, you know, I think we all laugh a little bit about the over-under. How long will we last in a certain model? Um, so I think that it's it's really hard to put a number on that timeline.
So, so I think there's two issues here and I I I appreciate the way you said that, Jen. I think there's two issues here. There's the, there's the COVID response issue. And there's the model that we're in response. In other words, if we have COVID things we we have to worry about, and I know we will. How do we respond to that? But then there's the issue of how is our model that we have implemented without COVID doing? Is it the right model? Are we seeing certain things? So that requires us, I think, to look both internally, what we're hearing, what we're seeing. Um, what we're demanding, what we're requiring, how we're holding people accountable, both students and and staff. Um, and then on the other side of it, um, you know, is there a change that should be made to that? Um, and then there's the whole other data point, which is does C nineteen require us to make a change to our model because of a health issue?
Thanks, Joe. Um, if someone is symptomatic, which is, which is not always the case. Um. Should they stay home for a minimum of fourteen days? Um, you know, with, if they're sick or they have a fever. Um, at what point should people consider self-quarantining? You're muted.
Sorry, um, the process is always going to be around being the most cautious. So it starts with. You yourself have direct contact with someone, then automatically that requires, because you had direct contact. The protocol has been, will continue to be the fourteen days. You did not have direct contact, but you live with someone. I think we all went through this in the past. Then that means you can still come to work, you can still come to school. You yourself have symptoms. Then you're required to go through the process of the fourteen days and have medical clearance to come back. Um, the issue here is going to be testing. Um, we are seeing a significant slowdown in testing taking place throughout the state right now. Especially in the last two week, two weeks. So there's a concern there about what that means when we open schools. And right now there is no intent to test students or teachers before we return to work or to school.
Um, along that same line, Joe, are we going to have a screening protocol at the front door of the school when students come in? No, you, you're muted again. Stop muting yourself.
Oh. Okay. Um, the protocol process has been to start at the home. We are currently doing that with our E S Y. Program where parents are checking this and I'm just going to read it. Parents are looking for a fever of a hundred point four or higher, chills or shaking, shaking chills, cough. Difficulty breathing or shortness of breath, uh, new loss of taste or smell, sore throat. Headache when in combination with other symptoms, muscle aches or body aches, nausea, vomiting or diarrhea, fatigue when in combination with other symptoms, or nasal congestion or runny nose. Those are the things that we're asking parents at home to check for on a daily and regular basis. We'll be asking our staff to do this of their, of themselves before they actually even consider coming into the building. Then from there, our protocols will be to to, if you will, monitor people like we normally do when we see students not feeling well. Or we ourselves as adults go to the nurse not feeling well and really just say, you know, what's better? It's better that I probably get out of here, go home. Maybe this is just a twenty-four hour bug and tomorrow I'll feel better. Or maybe I actually need to to take a look at at this a little bit more seriously.
Okay, um, will we be willing to offer parent training, um, on a lot of the tech components? Um, we are absolutely doing that. Karen and I have been talking about, um, a little parent food camp. Um, over, you know, at the beginning of the school year to help parents get familiar with some of our resources. Um, one of the other things that we tried to do this year was, um, select some new resources that make it a little bit more easier. For parents and students to navigate some of our our websites, for example, um, a single sign-on. Um, I know my, my son was in first grade last year and it was, we always had to find the sticky note with the ten different passwords. Um, to get him online in the morning. So we're looking at different resources that will help families with that process. So yes, we are planning to do that. Um, if the high school goes to a hybrid model, whether it be science or parking spaces. I would say yes.
Yeah, and one of the debates that we're going to have to have and discussions about supporting families, um, is uh, the idea of parking fees. Uh, potentially not having parking fees as a way to support that students could drive to school. Here's the catch. I know what happens when that happens. It means we start to. Drive together and I have big concerns about high school students driving together to school and after school. Um, so, um, but I I do think that we have to be supportive of our students. Who are are basically, our our families are saying, you know what, my kid can drive to school, can they just drive to school? I think we have to take a look at that. We don't have unlimited, um, uh, parking uh, slots available, but I think we could probably make something work.
Um, will project-based learning or experiential learning be reused or remote learning? And if so, how much? Um, one of the things that, um, we keep having a conversation about on our administrative team. Is the fact that teaching in a hybrid model and teaching in a remote model is not like teaching, um, in a regular classroom on a day-to-day basis. And that our staff is going to need support, um, in finding ways to develop a lesson that will be able to. Um, serve in a remote model like this. Um, so Karen and I have been looking at different resources for this. Um, and that, you know, project-based learning and experiential learning really can create a great long-term. Uh, learning experience for students, both engaging with their teachers and then engaging with their peers and working independently to apply their knowledge. So, um, those are some of the things that we're having a lot of conversations about. Um, next question here is, is it possible to have children that are not in the same family attend, um, the same cohort? Um, and I, I, what I would say, and I I don't want to speak for the rest of our team, but, um, it's going to be very challenging. To get all of our students and the families together into the same cohort, um, and we're not making any guarantees on that process. So, um, you can certainly reach out to your child's building principal and see if it's an option, but we cannot make any guarantees in terms of. Childcare or arrangements amongst families. Um, let's see, we are getting close. Um, we've talked a little bit about quarantining, so I think that's okay. Um, what if a child develops symptoms of COVID while at school? And what is the protocol there?
You want to take it?
Me or you?
You.
You can take it.
So are we talking about how students?
So for example, if, um, my child goes to school and all of a sudden, um, he's experiencing symptoms that are COVID-y.
COVID-y, okay, we got a new word. I, listen, I, the, the answer that I think we need to have because of the flexibility we were, we're being asked to have. Because of the impact of really not sure where this is going to end up, is that we're going to have to take these situations on a case-by-case basis and try to work with families. We have students all the time in our district, not many, but some who need medical support, who are out because of. Life-threatening situations and so on. And we put them on all kinds of different schedules. We just had a student who graduated from Harvard in a junior year. I mean, we're going to work with families to try to do what's right. You have that commitment from us. I think we have a track record of that. And, um, we will try to be as flexible as we can be to make sure that children are supported.
Thank you. Um, if the child is in a classroom that allows six foot distancing, can they take off their mask? No.
So the idea behind the, the whole mask has always. So the idea behind the the whole mask has always been to at six feet. Um or anything less, you you know, you have to be wearing a mask, right? So let's say you're in a classroom with more than that. The issue there becomes how many kids? The idea of airflow, how hot it is and so on and so forth. So the cautionary approach to this would be. To minimize the amount of time that students are actually taking off their mask and using it as a way to have a break. I think in September, that's gonna be very often during the time that they're physically in school. Because it's probably gonna be hot. And as somebody who's been in the buildings wearing a mask um in the last month. I can tell you that it does require you to really learn how to take um mask breaks while people are away from you. But we're not seeing ourselves going in the direction right now that because a room is in at ten feet that everybody can have their mask off. That's not the approach that we're going with.
Thank you. Um there's a question here about students that are out of district, um maybe attending one of our collaborative programs. Parents should be in contact with the collaborative program to see what their decision process is. Our decision will not it impact the collaboratives. Primarily be just because they have so many districts that feed into them. I believe Biko has, I think seventeen different um school districts there.
I have.
Do they have any specific questions they could reach out uh for parents that are in that situation either to myself or Casey? You'd be happy to talk to them about it.
Thanks, Jenny.
The other part is uh both collaboratives, uh Reed's Collaborative and Biko, which is two of the bigger collaborators we work with. But there is others there are actually, because we're both on on uh board members, they're actually uh voting tomorrow on their return to school model.
Great. Thank you. Um. Children that are um of age, they're eighteen at the high school, will they be allowed to say that they're intent in attendance? Or do parents need to um call them out sick?
Yeah, there's a case that was just uh determined in Massachusetts about the age of eligibility at eighteen. And as an institution at eighteen, it's actually the student's choice. But the best practice has always been to always communicate with parents. So the question is, can they call themselves in? Yeah, they can. Under the law, they actually can. They're considered an adult. Uh that doesn't mean that the school system, unless they give us some type of a document, say that we can't communicate with their parent and where they reside. And say, hey, just checking in to see if white junior isn't in school today. Um I just think that's a best practice. But yes, it's it's a fact that eighteen year olds can dismiss themselves. They can pretty much do whatever they want under the law. But that doesn't mean that as an institution, we don't have a right to have a communication uh with a parent.
Great.
That's been our practice and that'll be continued to be our practice.
Perfect, thank you. Um in the hybrid model, will buses still run? Yes.
It's actually one of our biggest headaches.
It is very true. Um will there be an option for students to sit in and listen to a recorded class? Um if they are unable to access a live crap classroom?
Yeah, these are some of the ideas that we have to put on the table with the teachers' union. It's been a kind of a no no for decades about recording in the classroom and worried about liability and worried about this and that and everything else. And I get it. But public education is very public right now. Uh I've been saying that phrase um for a long time. And I think we need to think differently. And not necessarily mean that this is the new approach, but think about different approaches, either that or other things. As we move forward within public education. I I just think that that's what this is all about. It's it's not us versus them. It's about how do we make sure that we're providing the best that we can, thinking differently. Um we can sure as heck um run some pilots and ideas and see how they work and collect the data. And and if they're running well, then utilize them. If they're not done, not utilize them. But I also think in the same way, for example, we've trained um every staff member with the opportunity to utilize Google Classroom. And we still have people who don't want to use it. Those days are coming to an end. We need to have equity between students and classes and courses in this district. And so if we are a Google district and we're usable Google Classroom and we're using Google Docs. Then that me needs to be the mainstay of what we're doing within teaching and learning.
Thanks, Joe. All right, it actually um hits one of the questions that came up about consistency in applications for parents. Yes, that is absolutely a goal of ours. Um and would there be a possible in the hybrid model for parents to request a different schedule? To coincide with their work schedule? And I would say that um unfortunately, I don't know that at this point. I think that, you know, um when we look at what happens on the cohort A days and the cohort B days. There will be overlap because t- the students need that instruction. Um so if a student was in two days in a row, they would basically be getting the same content two days in a row. And not really having access to the things that are happening later on in the week. Um.
That question also around the idea that the student is working? Is that is is I'm asking?
Parents that are working, so um.
I know.
On Tuesday, Wednesday.
So let me interject with this with the, for example, our high school students who may have part time jobs. There'll be a very definitive schedule for that and going to work part time and not being available. For their education is gonna be a concern and potentially a concern that I have to address um through their place of employment. Or um the Department of Labor.
Um there's a question here about the first day of school. Um we did answer that in our frequently asked questions document. Um we believe it will be Wednesday, September sixteenth. However, the school committee still needs to approve our calendar. If a student travels to a high risk state, will they need to quarantine before returning to school? And if so, for how long? Um yes, that is not under our jurisdiction. That is actually um a governor, you know, mandated by the governor. So whatever the statewide policies are on on quarantining. That would be the policy that our students would have to take in order to return to school. That is not something that we control. Um a few more questions here. Um any consideration of eye protection? I don't know if that means for teachers or.
Yeah, we 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 will have uh face shields um available if that's what they're looking at. And but there there have been um some medical folks on different TV stations that have talked about using. And I even just, for example, my readers or just uh eyeglasses, those are things we'll consider. Again, it's it's not at the top of the list, but as we hear more about these things and get more information, that could be a P P that we actually decide to order within our schools.
Um well, students need a negative COVID test to return to school if they're sent home sick with symptoms.
Will who see it?
Will students need a negative COVID test in order to return to school if they are sent home with symptoms?
Well, again, if there's the potential that it is C nineteen, then then the parents would be asked to go through the process of testing their child upon. Before returning because that would be the safest thing to do for their child as well as for everybody around them, including their household.
Um will there be an effort to to keep parent choice remote model students in sync with the hybrid or other model? Um yes, we will absolutely be working on that. Um and it was best we are able to. Um is, do we have a protocol about keeping windows open in classrooms um when possible?
There's no protocol, uh there's no protocol for keeping windows open at this time. I mean, uh obviously, all our windows and our three elementary schools are all brand new. The middle school nineteen ninety-eight windows are all operable as well as high schools. So up to the individual in the classroom.
Um and then will students have the opportunity to meet with their teachers? Yeah, if they are um in a remote model. Importance of relationships, absolutely, we agree with that. Um that's, I think, why we are extremely concerned. About making sure our students get into the classroom this year. Um we want them to be able to form those relationships with their teachers. We all know that that is a huge component of teaching and learning. Yes, it's very important to us. Let's see, what else we have here? Um you know, if you're in contact with, you know, someone who is, you know. COVID positive, then yes, you should be taking proper precautions unless that person. If there's just, if just traveled or um until they, until you have a positive connection. There is no need for precautions prior to that. If there's a vaccine, will we switch back to a normal school day? Or do we anticipate that we would continue with hybrid or remote um for the entire year?
It's a Massachusetts Department of Public Health decision, not mine.
If we get assigned a Wednesday, Friday, but we need a Tuesday, Thursday schedule, can we switch? We will do the best we can to make that happen, see if there are other families that need to switch as well. There's a few other questions here regarding COVID symptoms um and protocols. I I know that we are in the process of finalizing those protocols. So perhaps it might be a good idea for us to do that over the next few days and then include them with our frequently asked questions. And hopefully um that will help give us all some clarity around what this actually looks like. Because I think that's that's kind of challenging for all of us to wrap our head around. Um. Will there be extra help offered for students um in a hybrid or in the in school model? Absolutely, yes, we.
Yeah, we've actually, as part of our um early funding that goes through December, we've actually are in that grant, are gonna put money aside. And hopefully there's more federal assistance coming. And we would absolutely be doing that, um not only remotely um during the hybrid. Um but also potentially uh in catching up through um tutoring. That could actually take place in a in a one to one situation, like if we were doing testing with a student, except providing tutoring. Those are all options that are gonna be on the table.
Okay. That's all the questions I have um that are here.
And did you happen, can you um just look through the chat box as well? I think earlier when you were um reviewing questions. We might have missed some in the chat box.
I think I got them all. I was trying to go back and forth. Um but I will do a very, very quick scan. Um while I'm here. Uh many of them actually posted in the chat and then they posted again in the Q and A. There was a question about if parents get to choose between remote hybrid or in person learning. Um I did answer that earlier, that um the school committee will make the decision that however, within that decision, parents always have the option to choose. A remote program for their child. And I think that's it, Carolyn.
Okay. So um. And there's one more, actually, Jen.
Oh, sorry, did I miss something? Oh, um yep, sorry about that. Our school starting in time staying the same and will buses be arriving late? Matt?
Uh again, we're still looking at uh the busing. Uh right now, we we, the numbers that we're looking at are showing that the buses are gonna be arriving late. Uh it's a discussion we have to have over the next couple of weeks. Uh one of the important pieces is gonna be, we're going to be resending out to everyone almost. Almost like a re-registration process, so we really know who's gonna be on the bus. That's gonna give us a lot better information on what we're looking at for timings and.
Thanks, Matt. And that's it.
Uh Matt, I'm sure if I can just interject a couple of things, a couple of the uh concerns and questions that's come up. Is uh the current situation of the statewide and the news um that I spoke um earlier about. Where the state associations have come out um and said that remote is 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 the best way, in some cases, the only way. I think it's really important for our parents to recognize where the Norton Teachers Association is and and the school committee is. And I'm speaking now on behalf of the administration and the school committee, if I may, and if you let me. Um last week, the president of the of the association and I uh released a joint statement that was very clear. That the health and safety of students is at the top priority of both the administration, the school committee and the Norton Teachers Association on behalf of their members. And children. And I I don't think that that's changed um at all during our process. Um in my discussions with their president, um some of which, uh you know, are private discussions that we always have between management and labor. They've been positive. Um they've been about the best interest of Norton under the guides of safety. Um I've made a commitment um to them on that um for a number of reasons, not not number one, because I represent you. Um when I'm speaking to them as the superintendent. Um number two, uh my wife is a member of that uh union, and so I have a vested interest uh in my wife's health. I've said this over and over again, maybe some of you are getting tired of it, and have the most vested important part of me, which is my daughter, that I've chosen. Through her and my wife to send to Norton Public Schools and will attend Norton High School next year as a freshman. I don't think there's anyone that's more committed to the safety of my staff and my students than I am. Um and I believe that our local association feels the same way. I know they feel the same way. It doesn't mean all their members do, in the same way that not all administrators that you've been talking to, including our principals, feel the same way. These are, these are debates and discussions that come from all different grounds and philosophies. But at this stage in the game, the commitment has been to allow for the school committee to take their vote. And then to have the association and the administration through the Labor Management Committee. And then beyond that, their executive board and you, the school committee, come to resolutions. On the exact specificity of what the safety concerns issues are, what the teaching and and learning model uh is. I can also assure you that everyone in this situation has had a comment to either you as a school committee member. Or me as the superintendent or one of my colleagues in the administrative team. Or they've reached out as a union union member and say, no, I want this, or they've said, no, I want that. We're all in the same boat. What we have to do, if we're all in the same boat, is drive it in the same direction. Or it sinks. And I think there's a commitment to drive this boat in the same direction. Pending your decision. And I I, it doesn't mean that the Norton Teachers Association and I disagree on everything. But it means that we're pedaling in the same direction, trying to find the common ground in the best interest of children. And the safety of children and their membership, who are in many cases have been people that have been working in this district for decades. Uh including the ones that we've hired this summer that are new. So, you know, i- if the ship is going in a direction, we can sail it. Even if there's engine trouble, right? E- even if there's an oil that's not working correctly. I think we're there. Now it's about getting to the really deep down discussions moving forward, and I'll leave it at that.
Thanks. I think that we're all in agreement. I think um it's important to know that um Shannon has been on all of our calls. I think um we shared with um listeners tonight that you certainly could reach out to her directly. Follow um the Norton Teachers Association page on Facebook and on Twitter. I think that we all have a very similar goal in mind. Um it's about the best interests of Norton Public Schools, which includes students, it includes families, and it includes staff. So um that's our main goal, and I think that we're all working towards um achieving that, so. I think that at this point, um I'm not sure if there's any commentary questions from. The school committee, I think that I feel like um. We, I'm hoping that we don't, but I am somewhat concerned that a noon time call tomorrow. Um that was a sort of last minute call is going to um be some information. That may change the trajectory of of sort of what we've been working on for weeks. Um I just want to reiterate that all of us have been really diligently focused on making decisions. Based on facts of um working together, having multiple meetings with. Stakeholders, with our senators, um with our Board of Health, with our um administrators. We've included families, um parents on our um committees. We've included staff on our committees. These are not decisions that we're making without any sort of thought. These um are decisions that we're making in a collaborative fashion, and I think that it's really important that we just make sure everybody knows. We recognize and um maybe I can just share when we received, um when I sort of received a couple of emails today. Sharing sort of ideas, I I can say publicly, um we absolutely talked about. And maybe the hybrid um committee could speak more directly to this. I wasn't part of hybrid, but I know that part of their conversation was about. Maybe doing a little bit of a model that was suggested in the. maybe doing a little bit of a model that was suggested in the email, which was we create an opportunity for in-school learning for our younger elementary students and then a hybrid model, excuse me, a remote model for our older students. I think that these are conversations that we had, and there was a lot of reasoning behind the final decisions that were presented to us as a committee. So we also had conversations about heading back to school full-time. I think, I just hope that everybody recognizes it wasn't as simple as just saying we're going to open. We were given pages and pages and pages of expectations and requirements that needed to be met to sort of make that happen. And, you know, we had to consider not only getting children into our schools, but also getting them to our schools. So it included busing, it included food services, it included many factors that I think made it a much more complex situation than just saying, "Everybody come back to school." So these conversations absolutely happened. I know that it's hard. You know, we had these conversations in sort of committees and then in subcommittees of the committees and some of the those groups, and I think that we tried our best to share them in sort of town halls. We've had opportunity for that. But if you, you know, if you still have questions as community members, we absolutely encourage you to please use the Let's Talk option to reach out to, as we sort of shared before, Dr. Byetta, any of our administrators. I know yesterday I didn't share through Let's Talk, but you can also reach out to our athletic director at the high school. I know there are families that are wondering about sports and how those programs are going to sort of happen or not happen, both at the high school level and at the middle school level. So there are a lot of options. We're trying our best to keep on top of responding to emails and questions. So if you can have a little patience with us as we kind of navigate these decisions, that would be great. I'm not sure if anybody else on the committee has any comments, anything they'd like to share.
Carolyn, I just wanted to address your comment about the hybrid because I was on that committee and I was pretty vocal about what you brought up, and that was, you know, we did discuss having the younger kids attend in-person school and the older kids do the remote learning. For me, my thought process was there were a lot of high school kids who struggled with remote learning. It wasn't easy for them. Just because they're older and they're able to stay home alone doesn't mean that remote learning is easy for them. I think we lost a lot of kids with the remote. I think that a lot of them checked out or relied on friends to get their work done. And part of my thought process, being on the hybrid committee, my opinion was as a school committee member, you know, we're voted by our entire community and, you know, our job is to try to create a solution. None of them are good, but we have to try to create a solution that caters to all of our students, not just a certain population. The only other thing that I would like to say before tomorrow, because I'm sure tomorrow will be, I'm sure there'll be a lot of people on the call tomorrow. You know, we've already talked about how much work has gone into this. The amount of stress is absolutely unbearable at times. I've never experienced anything like this. There may be decisions made. There may be decisions made for us tomorrow. We don't know. But there may have to be decisions made by the five of us volunteers who live in Norton. Our children go to Norton schools. And I just hope as a community, whether you approve of our decision or not, that you can just remember that we are parents, we are human, we are putting every single thing that we have into this decision and that if you could just be kind, please just be kind. Don't, please don't let us go on social media on Friday to being attacked. We have gone through the paces to get to this point. So I'm just asking as a community, I love this town, please just be kind.
I think the one thing that we also just want to be mindful of and to remember is that we have literally read, I think, you know, sort of pages and pages and pages of expectations and requirements and really have, I can't thank our administrators enough between Joe, Karen, and Jen. And I think I am reaching out to them via text and phone calls and asking for conversations to make sure that I understand because, you know, I am not an elementary school teacher. I teach in higher ed. So just to make sure that I sort of have a full understanding, and I think we've all done that. So if you can imagine they're getting hit from all different directions, from each one of us, making sure that we have the information clear, well-understood, so that we can make an informative decision. I think we're really, I can speak for myself, I won't speak for others, but I think one of my biggest concerns is that we have spent sort of hours between our, each one of us being on some form of a committee or having sort of the invitations to meet with senators or to meet with different organizations to talk about the sort of back-to-school options, only to perhaps be told, maybe tomorrow, maybe not, maybe told the day before we go back to school in September, that something has changed and all of our hard work will have to be sort of reconfigured or thought through differently. So we are trying our best to be flexible and to sort of come up with some, you know, options so that we can sort of be interchangeable, that we can go back and forth between, you know, maybe a remote to a hybrid to all back-to-school to, you know, back to a remote. We don't know. But we're trying to really develop very strong plans to make sure that we have support for our staff and to make sure we have support for our families. I absolutely know, both from social media and also from people who have reached out to me directly, I think each one of us on this committee have probably heard from a lot of our sort of Norton friends and even friends from other towns, kind of, you know, what's going on? How are things going? We do understand the challenge of working families, of single-parent families, of families who are really going to need to or who are going to be challenged with the decisions we make. We don't know, you know, sort of how it's all going to play itself out, but we are absolutely committed to doing what we can to offer support. So conversations with champions is happening. As Dr. Byetta said, conversations with the YMCA, different programs. We don't know at this point how to make it okay for everybody, but we certainly are willing to do our best to try to support families who are going to be challenged by this. And if I can just sort of end by saying, you know, we recognize we're in the midst of a pandemic. Nobody wished for this. I can tell you that when I started on a school committee, I never really thought that I would be needing to make a decision, this sort of extreme decision. So we hope that we make a decision that meets the needs, that best suit children in regards to learning. That's our goal. I continue with everybody. If people haven't seen yet, Mr. Kent Taylor's, Mr. Taylor's graduation speech, I would sort of recommend that all Norton families watch it if you haven't. I probably have watched it 20 times. And I think that the one thing he said when he addressed our high school seniors on graduation was, you know, we have to just kind of continue to move forward in the midst of trauma. So we're doing our best and we hope that tomorrow we get some information that doesn't really sort of change our plan. I can do another invitation. We really appreciated the couple of emails that we got today. They absolutely sort of allowed us to, you know, kind of put that into our thought process as well. So if others want to reach out, if you didn't have your questions answered, let us know. If you have thoughts, comments, suggestions, let us know. We're always willing to absolutely include that in our kind of deliberation that will happen tomorrow. Jen?
I also wanted to let people know that we'll be updating the frequently asked questions document. We really want to make that a living document where we add to as things come up, so people can refer back to it for information. And that if people would like to submit other questions through the Google form that was sent home earlier today, I'm happy to kind of, you know, bring those together for tomorrow night if the committee would like to look at them.
And I do want to also say, I'm not sure if I said it. I very possibly did, but I think my head is a little bit on overload, so forgive me. I think that especially Shannon Taylor knows. I met Shannon when I was a parent at JCS and was overseeing the SPO there. And I remember doing a presentation for a back-to-school night. And, you know, so I'm going back probably maybe 10 years ago. I don't even remember. And I was sort of the teacher's biggest cheerleader back in those days, and I remain sort of our staff's biggest cheerleader. So I know that Norton is a successful district because we really do have just sort of the greatest administration and the greatest staff. And I just want to thank them because I know that they are also struggling as we try to make these decisions. So it's really quite a pleasure to work with such a cohesive team. So I wanted to sort of just say that out loud. But I want to just thank everybody. Dr. Byetta, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just two comments to wrap up if it's all right with you, and I appreciate those comments on behalf of the volunteers, the team, and the staff. Listen, I learned years ago that the reason why I would probably be somewhat successful in this role is because I learned to delegate, and my team is probably laughing right now because they know I delegate. But I can't tell you the rock stars that have really put this together and the way that they've done it. So I won't call them out by name, but they know who they are, and I've tried to reach out personally. This and what you've received in the last few days is incredible amount of work. I want to thank how they led a ton of volunteers, including members of our own staff who chose to give away time away from their families and their time off to give their two cents into the process. The Labor Management Committee that consists of five NTA members and three administrators, that's been meeting every single, almost every single Monday since March with a couple of weeks break in between it. So thank all of them. And I'll leave you, the five of you that have this difficult conversation for tomorrow night. Hard decisions lead to opportunities. Period. And I think whatever decision you decide to make tomorrow night, of which I will support and will have commentary for you prepared tomorrow night, this is an opportunity for NPS and for public education in general. So you know where I stand with this. It's an opportunity. Hard decisions are about opportunities. They're not about thinking that you made the wrong decision. And we all know where social media is going to be, and social media for me typically is in this one and right out that one. Because if it wasn't, then we wouldn't be able to do what we do. So I know you have some hard decisions to do, potentially a nice glass of wine tonight and relaxation. Get away from it. Stop the emails. Stop, just get away from it, is my point of view, because that's what I plan to do tonight as well. Thank you.
If I can just sort of end, it triggered something, Dr. Byetta, when you sort of said earlier today, we were talking, and one of the things that I think we would all agree on is Norton has never been a follower, that Norton has always been a leader. I think that we have seen that, you know, in sort of many different situations, and I think it's really important to know that we are making a decision. I think that I can say easily that we are making a decision that is based on what is best for Norton, what is best for our staff, our students, and our families, to the best of our ability. So we really appreciate that. Jen, if you don't mind, I did see one question come up in the Q and A. If parent-choice remote is selected, can we get access to software earlier than September 16th?
Yeah, there's a potential that that could be in play, yes. That's something that we're, one of the, it's on my notes of things to do on how we can potentially, not only to the students, but also to the, we know the staff, but also to the parents, so that there's a level, not only from the teacher and the student, but the parents of what it entails.
Great. Thank you. And I should say thank you. We've been getting some comments just for support, and we really appreciate it. Thank you to everyone who really recognizes the challenge of this. So without any further comments, I will look for a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Thanks, Dan. Thanks, Sheri. All in favor? Let's see, Dinesh?
Yes.
Sheri?
Yes.
Dan, sorry, I was looking for you, Dan.
Yes.
And Kathleen?
Yes.
Thank you. So thanks, everybody. We will be back tomorrow, same place, same time. And we will continue this conversation. So come, you know, with questions in hand, but I really appreciate everybody's time and effort. So and I didn't publicly thank Wade, Matt, Vinnie, Casey, who else am I forgetting? Karen, Jen, whoever, but I really appreciate it. Thanks, all. Have a good night.
Be safe.
Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Hi, guys. We're here all week.
Well, I go home. I might just stay here tonight.